Greetings, everybody. We will start in about one minute. We will give a few more folks time to begin, and then we will promptly begin. Thank you. All right, indeed. Thank you so much for attending this evening. This is Wake County Democratic Party's presentation of Protect Public Education. We are excited to have everyone with us this evening. We are also very excited and honored to have eight of our nine endorsed Wake County Board of Education candidates with us, and we are looking forward to a really fun, informative discussion. The candidates will be provided some topics, and they will get a certain amount of time to talk amongst themselves. At some point toward the second half, we will pause and then we will break out into breakout rooms of groups of two or three, where stakeholders will have about fifteen or twenty minutes to interact a little more closely with the candidates who are here this evening. My name is Kevin Creach. I am Chair of Wake County Democratic Party. I want to also take a moment to acknowledge the many, many folks who are assisting with tonight's presentation. You will see folks to whom you can chat. You'll see an exclamation point and then the word chat if you need to chat to them. If you are also an elected official or a candidate running for some other office, a Democratic candidate running for some other office, please take a moment right now and chat to Kate Bixler, again, exclamation point chat. She will take down everyone's name, and in just a few minutes, she will take a moment and read out the celebrities among us. So for this evening, I want to do a little bit of a roll call with our candidates who are with us. For District One, we have Ben Klapsaddle. For District Two, we have Ms. Monika Johnson-Hossler. For District Three, we have Doug Hammack. For District Four, Tara could not be here this evening because she is having her first BAC in-person meeting in a long time, so I will read a statement from her. Trust me, that is very, very important. For District Five, Lynn Edmonds is with us. For District Six, Sam Hershey is with us. For District Seven, we have Chris Hagerty. For District Eight, we have Chairwoman Lindsay Mahappy. And for District Nine, we have Tyler Swanson. A lot of the work that we do here at Wake County Democratic Party is lifting up our down-ballot candidates. Our down-ballot candidates affect our lives, our day-to-day lives, more than most people think. So we are asking everyone to pay attention this evening, to use the resources that we're going to provide, make a plan to vote, and as always, begin on the back of your ballot. The back of your ballot will include municipal candidates, if there is a municipal race where you are. Our Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor, Ms. Jenna Wadsworth is back there, and trust me, the work she does is very, very vital to Wake County. But also our amazing candidates for school board, and we have endorsed nine. These school board candidates went through quite a process. Our endorsement process is not easy. There were many candidates whom we spoke to and vetted and interviewed and read questionnaires and had big old deliberations about. It was a very tough thing to do. There were some candidates who didn't quite get our endorsement, but I think they'll be around in other capacities. It was very, very tough. So I want to thank these candidates for stepping up and stepping forward. This is difficult work. It's difficult to run. It's difficult to go through the process. So whenever you see any of these candidates out and about, please give them some appreciation. One more time, last call. If you are an elected official or if you are a Democratic candidate, please make sure you have chatted to Kate Bixler so that she can do a roll call for you. And what I'm going to do right now is check in with Ms. Bixler. Ms. Bixler, do we have a list that you would like to share with the crowd?
Actually, Madam Chair, it looks like it is just us folks and our esteemed school board candidates.
That is perfectly fine. Well, without further ado, we are going to give each candidate about one minute just to say hello and just to get a little bit of information out there. Candidates, as you are speaking, we will be dropping your information and your links into the chat. Try to keep it at one minute. I'm going to keep a little bit of an eye on it because what we really, really, really want to get to is the discussion that you will be having amongst yourselves. I want everyone in this room to remember, these folks are human beings, and they're really putting themselves out there. And sometimes we miss the forest for the trees. We want to hear what they have to say to each other about topics that are important to everyone. So we are going to begin right now with Mr. Klapsaddle. How are you this evening?
Hey, Madam Chair, thank you and everyone out tonight, and thank you to the, to the Wake County Democratic Party for hosting this. I'm Ben Klapsaddle. I'm doing absolutely fantastic, and I'm the candidate for District One, Wake Forest, Roseville, and Wendell, a little bit of Knightdale and Zebulon. So just a, just a real quick, you know, I'm a product of public education, Cumberland County. My wife is Martin County, and my two kids went to school here in, in Wake County. And, you know, someone asked me why I want to do this and why I want to run, and it's because I want to make sure everybody has access to a great education. And the other thing is, is I want to continue and build on. I mean, there's improvements that can be made, but I want to build on the great work that our school board has been doing for the last two years, three years, that's taken us through probably the worst, well, the worst pandemic that we've had and what great works. I just want to continue what they're building on and, and make it, you know, make it even better. So thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for everyone tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Klapsaddle. Again, he is running for District One. Next up, we have the amazing Monika Johnson-Hossler, running for District Two. Ms. Johnson-Hossler, are you ready?
Yes, thank, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to everyone who is attending tonight, especially for being here, but also for your support of Wake County Public Schools. As Kevin said, my name is Monika Johnson-Hossler. I have currently served on the Wake County School Board since 2013, so this is my fifth election. I've had the pleasure of running every two years since 2013. I am running for school board again. Sadly enough, for the exact same reasons I ran in 2013. When I came onto the board, I was filling the last seat from a board who, in my opinion, as a parent and as a spouse of an educator, did not have the best interests of all students in Wake County in mind. And I see that as the reason why I'm running again this cycle. It has been my pleasure to serve on the Wake County School Board in District Two, which includes Garner, a significant portion of Fuquay, and a smaller portion of unincorporated Raleigh, and now a little bit of Raleigh, the city of Raleigh. I actually live in the county, so I don't belong to a municipality, which I think is important because I'm also a small-town girl educated in public schools here in North Carolina. Both my husband and I, we have a high school, a daughter who's a high school senior, so I readily admit my investment in Wake County Public Schools is personal, both for my daughter and my spouse, who is an educator. And I'm running to continue to advocate and be the champion for Wake County Public Schools to ensure that Wake County remains the best choice for all families in Wake County. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, Ms. Johnson-Hossler is an incumbent. She is running in District Two. Next up, we have Mr. Doug Hammack, who is running in District Three. Hello, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. Thanks for having us, for hosting this. I'm running for the same reason all the other candidates here tonight are running. I'm running because we believe strongly in public schools. My personal experience with public education was transformative. My life would not have been what it has become had the county that I grew up in invested in the teachers, invested in the infrastructure, invested in what made it possible for me to move from the direction my family was heading into the life that I've had. And then we moved here to Wake County in ninety-five, and our children got to go through Wake County Public Schools and have had a stellar education. And so now, as the life cycle of things goes, I've reached the age where it is now my responsibility, obligation, to pay forward to future generations and to begin to invest in us having strong public schools for all students across the county this year, next year, for the next ten years. The people who invested heavily in the eighties and nineties assured my children got a good education. I want to be investing heavily now so that my great-grandchildren can have a great education.
Thank you so, so much. Again, this is Mr. Doug Hammack. He's running in District Three. I'm going to read a statement from Tara Waters. Ms. Waters is running in District Four. And as I mentioned earlier, she can't be here tonight for a very special reason. She says, "I regret that I am unable to join you this evening. Each Board of Education district has a Board Advisory Council or a BAC that meets at various times throughout the year. The District Four Board Advisory Council meets tonight and is a time when principals and representatives from each school gather to strengthen our schools. As I continue to advocate for our students and educators, I look forward to meeting with you in the near future." For more information on my campaign, please visit waters, the number four, wake.com. That's watersforwake.com. And that's from Ms. Tara Waters, who is running her BAC meeting this evening. Next up, we have Ms. Lynn Edmonds, who is running for District Five. She's going to take about a minute to say hello. Hello?
Hello. I know many of you, and for those that don't know me, I've been engaged in the Wake County Democratic Party for a long time. I was part of the team, for those of you that were here in 2010, that helped fight back the Tea Party takeover of our school board. And of course, this year, we are being threatened by the party of Trump trying to take over our school board, but that's not going to happen. And I'm going to invite you to learn about me through the links that are being shared and through my website. I'm going to tell you a couple of other things. I do have Jim Martin, the current school board member. I do have his endorsement and enthusiastic support, quite frankly. Jim and I have remained engaged and worked together during his whole tenure. And I want to convey a message. We are going to have, you know, it's a non-member board, and no matter what happens, we're going to have five new board members. And I want to encourage you and beg you to please find the people you know in Tara's district, Monika's district, Chris's district, and Lindsay's district, because I want to keep our four incumbents and see that is critically important to maintaining stability and good governance on the new board that we're going to have come November. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Edmonds. And again, she's running in District Five, currently held by Jim Martin, who is retiring. Up next, we have Mr. Sam Hershey, who is running in District Six. Hello, Hershey.
Hey, everybody. I just got to say that Lynn could get me to walk through fire to vote for Democrats. She is an impressive person. I'm Sam Hershey. I'm running in District Six. I hope there are some good representation from District Six here, which is Sanderson, Rotten, to the governor's mansion, Centennial Campus, Carter Finley, kind of all over the place, all in Raleigh, but not all of Raleigh. I, I'll just say that, as Monika said, this is personal for me. I've got a second grader. The ideas I hear on the other side frighten me for education because I want our kids to have a really great, well-rounded education. It's about, it's not just reading, writing, and arithmetic. It's the arts and the science and language and so much more, and we have great schools. And I'm just going to, when I'm on the board, I'm going to, I'm going to listen to our constituents, whatever, you know, struggles they're having, work to improve, but I just want to recognize that we really have great schools. We have great teachers, great educators, great staff, and we just need a board that really supports them a hundred percent. And I look forward to chatting with everybody, and if you are in District Six, shoot me a message at samforwake@gmail.com.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hershey. And he, again, is running in District Six. And Christine Kushner is currently in that district, and she is retiring after a long time of service to Wake County Public Schools. Up next, for District Seven, we have Mr. Chris Hagerty, who is one of our incumbents. Hello, Hags.
Hey, Kevin. I'll do my best not to say something embarrassing. How about that? You never know with me. I am Chris Hagerty. I am the Vice Chair of your Board of Education. I've been on the board for about four years. And we've had a chance to do some really exciting stuff in that time. You know, we've improved teacher and staff pay. We've done it in a responsible way to avoid compression and make sure that all of, you know, staff is paid fairly. We've built new schools, and we've renovated older schools, and there's still more to do there. And most importantly, I think we've kept our kids safe and healthy. Now, you're hearing a lot from the other side. It started off with masks and crazy theories about vaccines and government experiments, and then it went to critical race theory, which they're never quite defined, but we knew it was really bad, they said. And, you know, pivoting to book burning and all kinds of stuff, trying to tear down our schools and paint this picture that they're not the great places they are. But if you live in Wake County, you know we have great schools, right? You know, we attract people from all over the country that move here. We build jobs, and it's all centered around the great students that are coming out of Wake County Public Schools. There's a lot of work left to do. We have academic recovery and programs that we're putting in place to help our students come out of the pandemic and rebuild their literacy skills. We have to do more for teacher and staff because we want to recruit and retain great teachers. And finally, you know, all of us on the board, we have to stand up against the hate and the intolerance and just the bullying that's out there against certain members of our community, whether they're teachers, whether they're students, whether they're other families that attend our schools. So I'm Chris Hagerty. You can learn more about my campaign at hagertyfour, that's the number four, schools.com, and I look forward to answering any questions you have. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hagerty. Up next, we have, oh, by the way, he's running in District Seven, and he's an incumbent. We have our Wake County Board of Education Chairwoman, Lindsay Mahappy. She is running in District Eight. Ms. Mahappy, the floor is yours.
Hey, Kevin. Thank you so much. It's good to be here. And my name is Lindsay Mahappy. I have been on the board since 2016. And so that initial board that Monika told you about, when I came on in 2016, we were still working to undo some of the things that they did. And we had a great groove, and like everyone, COVID just kind of stopped in, in our tracks, and we are back in action. And this work is focused on what is best for our students. And I strongly believe that everyone here has centering our students at their heart, championing our students at their heart, because we know as, as board members, as educators, I'm a former classroom teacher. When you focus on your student and it was what is best for the students, you are doing what's best for our teachers, what is best for our staff, and what is best for our families and the broader community. And we see that in the fact that we are able to raise staff pay to sixteen dollars an hour. We know that we would like it to be more. We are able to graduate over ninety percent of our students. We know we can do better. We are able to make sure that we are building new buildings and renovating old buildings so that our students have places that are learning cathedrals for them to learn. And so my name is Lindsay Mahappy. You can find out more about me at electlindsay.com, and I represent District Eight. If I was on your ballot before, make sure to check it. My district was reduced by thirty percent, so you may have another, one of these fine folks on your ballot. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman Mahappy, and that is a good point. Lots of redistricting, so double-check your ballots. You might see some surprises. Up next, we have Mr. Tyler Swanson, who is running in District Nine. Mr. Swanson, are you ready? Hi. Make sure you're unmuted. There you go.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. This is what happens when you juggle too soon. I'm Tyler Swanson, and I am running in an open seat in District Nine. And I'm running because I believe that our students, our teachers, our parents, and our stakeholders deserves the champion. And Reed appears to define the champion as an individual who insists on the power of connection, that insists that our student can be the best they can be, and that's why I'm in this race. I am fortunate to have the Marjorie Taylor Greene of, of the, of the county. But let me just assure you that there is a little Marjorie Taylor Greene in the other eight districts as well. And we must come together and reject this form of bigotry and hatred at every level, especially at the school board level. As a classroom, former classroom teacher, this behavior that we are witnessing from these extremists should have, would not have taken place in my classroom, and it does not belong on the Board of Education. So we must come together to reject this form, to reject these individuals, and to insist that we have true advocates who consider the needs of all of our students at the board table, making decisions for what's best for all of our, our students, teachers, and families. So to find out more about my, my stance and what I stand for, go to Swanson for Wake. And I can assure you that I do not believe in putting guns in the hands of our teachers. I believe in arming our students with truth, with knowledge, and ensuring that they have the power that they can, whether that's through a book, that's through the literature that we're teaching them, that they can see themselves in what they're, what they're learning, and that that inspires them to become the true champions and the true change-makers that our country needs. Because these students are the future of today and tomorrow, and they need some folks that's going to have their back and fight with them and fight for them. So I'm Tyler Swanson, and I look forward to answering any questions from you all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Swanson. And again, he's running in an open seat, which is District Nine. I'm going to pause right here and say that if there is anyone who has come in who is a seated elected official or a Democratic candidate, please send a chat to Kate Bixler, and at some point, we will acknowledge you. All right, now we're going to get to the fun part. This is the part I'm looking forward to. We are going to have all of our candidates spotlight, and we are going to have a conversation. And so candidates, we will, there will be different ones of us asking a question or giving you a topic, and we really want you to engage with each other. Be mindful, though. If you're like me, you'd like to talk a lot. Some of us like to talk more than others. So kind of try to be mindful of the time. We're going to keep it to about five to six minutes per topic. And let's see, is everybody up and ready to go? Okay. All right, so I'm going to start with the first one. I'm going to do what I call light timekeeping. And so whoever starts the conversation first, you get a gold star. So here is what we will be talking about right now. This is open discussion. "School Board rep is a tough gig and seems to be getting more challenging as each week passes. Even so, you are all clearly committed to serving in this position. Discuss among one another your motivation for doing this work despite this position's challenges. Basically, what makes you tick when it comes to serving as a school board rep?" And I am now going to throw it over to you all, and I'm going to start by timer. Thank you, Monika.
Absolutely. I, I'm happy to get us started. I, I mean, it's no secret. I'm very honest about my own upbringing, being raised by a single parent in a community where education truly was my only way to equalize as a black girl being raised. I was a statistic, black girl being raised by a single parent in a community where there were not a lot of opportunities. What you were defined as a statistic in, in public school, public school educators truly equalized the playing field for me. And when I ran for this particular district, the person before me had this seat that didn't really represent the black and brown folk in my community. And one of the first things that I heard when I started knocking on doors, especially of black and Latinx families, was, wow, somebody's actually asking me, what do I need from public schools, which were a list of things that was wow, somebody's actually asking me what do I need from public schools, which were a list of things that no one had ever asked. And then what, what was more importantly is the level of engagement um, that I got when people realized that I was willing to get answers for them regarding our school district. So it's also to, as I say, as a non educator, to break down as you speak to community members who need to know how to navigate the school system to ensure that their kids get resources.
But we, you know, I, Monika, that's absolutely, that's absolutely, yeah, that's absolutely right. I, you know, and I think everyone, uh, everyone is here for service and service our community and service to our fellow man. I mean, if we, if we don't have service in your heart and, and wanted to help people, uh, all people, and I'm a big advocate, all, when I say that, uh, all people, uh, you know, I, I can, I say I never can walk in anybody's shoes, but I know the shoes that, uh, I walked in because it is the public education. It was a teacher's. I, I'm an Army member. Uh, my father was a career service member and, and the Army didn't care back in the sixty, seventies whether they moved you in March or they moved you in, in December, they just moved you and uh, the service of the nation. And it was the teachers, public school teachers that brought us in and, and, and helped us. And, and I tell folks, the, you know, uh, I tell people about, uh, and I tell people about Bert Smith down in Cumberland County who, uh, who just took, uh, took me and uh, and shaped me and, and helped me. Now I have other teachers, but the, the, the individual Bert Smith who, who did that for me. And I never thought I would, uh, gosh, I didn't think I was gonna graduate from high school at one time and, uh, and he helped us, uh, you know, go to college, uh, he helped me get a scholarship, uh, and so forth. And, uh, and then I, I then spent the next twenty seven years serving, uh, fellow soldiers of the nation. But I, I go back to service and, and I don't want to take up the whole time. But it's services and, 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 and my heart and, and just respect for people, um, and, and wanted to make sure that we give this opportunity to all the children, uh, and all the people that are out there. Someone said one time to, to me is, is that it's through education that we will become equal. And that through education you will learn, through education you will see the world. And, and I looked at, uh, Bert Smith and said, okay. And, uh, but he, 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 he and other teachers, uh, helped me and shaped me and so forth. So I, I'm sorry for taking too much time. I'll, I'll be quiet, but I think everyone has, we all have that. We have that service in our, we want to serve and help.
I think you're sharing and showing all of the passion that we have, Ben. I, I think anybody who steps into this role has to have a service in their heart and, and center all children. And for me, as a former classroom teacher, it was how do I help those people that are serving in the classroom and taking care of our children? Because we need qualified teachers, we need competent teachers and we need someone with that lens. And I think the wonderful thing about our current board and about, you know, this potential new board is we all bring our own lens. And I think yet having that and one of the things I hope we convey tonight to folks is that we not only have our own lens, but we respect the lens of other people. And that is what we need to show our, our children, that they bring their own lens to each classroom and they need to respect the lens of the others that they're with. And so for me, it's to bring my lens, my perspective as a former teacher, as the mom of three kids, um, and as a resident of this county.
We've got about a minute and ten seconds. Who's next?
Well, I, uh, would be hard pressed to think of another social institution that has more to do with long-term wellbeing of our society in public schools. And when I look at what we can do in public schools, part of the reason public schools are so difficult right now is because as a society, we have a hard time imagining that we could have a shared collective narrative. But that's where that happens. The, the hammering out of a shared narrative happens in public schools. So to wade into all the crazy that's going on and be able to work toward being able to create a common good institution in our society, that's a strong motivator for me.
Thirty seconds.
And I'll just say lastly, it's the diversity. When you look at this new board that we are, I'll just go out and say it, um, look at the diversity. It is diverse amongst not just color and creed and religion and, and sexuality, but our values, our, our beliefs. But the thing that brings us all together is the passion for service, the passion to move our, improve the lives of our students. And also the power to show our students what they can become. That they too can become a board member. They can go from the classroom to the teacher, to the board member, to the superintendent. And wherever they choose to go, that's the power of knowledge. And that is the importance of allowing folks to see the beauty of everything. And so this nonsense that this, but let me just also say this very lastly. This is what scares the heck out of the other side because they do not want this fusion politics is what I love to call it, coming together, working together to improve the lives of all citizens. And when we invest in our kids, we invest in our schools, it's an investment that keeps on giving. And so I'm grateful um, to be in community with you all and also showing that we have the power to shape the lives of our students and we have to use that power for good. And I know I'm over the thirty seconds.
Yes, you are. Very good. That was wonderful. Um, so what we are going to do right now, we're getting ready to move to the second discussion. Um, topic that Lisa Mead, our second Vice Chair, uh, sorry, our Kerry Vice Chair will be asking, but before we do that, need to do a quick check-in with Ms. Kate Bixler. Ms. Bixler, do we have any folks we need to announce?
Uh, not at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, fantastic. All right. I am going to turn, uh, the query over to our Kerry Mooresville Vice Chair, Lisa Mead, and she's gonna ask us something about how do we support folks when we're not really talking about salaries? So, uh, Ms. Mead, are you ready?
I'm trying to pull up my question.
I'll tell you what, I've got it if you want it, or have you got it?
Um, you can go ahead and send me in the chat. Sorry.
Oh, I've got it on a piece. I'm, I'm old school. I have a hard copy.
Oh, I'm pulling it up. Sorry, one of my children asked me to make them a snack.
No problem.
Aside from salary, what are the things the school board can, can or should do to support school personnel at all staffing and faculty levels? Share and discuss among one another anything in particular you want to support. Do you want me to repeat it?
Oh, no. I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
So Chris, why don't you?
Let someone else start. Yeah.
Yeah, Chris, why don't you and I start since we, and Sam, you didn't speak last time either, right? Okay. So I, I'll just say what I tell people when I'm asked this question is it's not just about pay. Um, our teachers need the resources for their classrooms. Uh, they need the resources that their students need. And they need their students' needs met. That makes their jobs easier. So we've got to address our staffing shortages, um, aside from teachers. If we can, you know, find a way to secure more bus drivers, more helping professionals, more CNS worker, our child nutrition service workers, et cetera, and build up the staffing in our buildings, that's going to support the teaching profession. The other thing that we can do is, um, through policy, make sure that WCPSS is the absolute best place to work. That it's a place where teachers want to teach. Um, and I know the board has worked very hard on such policies and I, I think it is a great place to teach, but wherever we can find where we can improve in policy to make that the working conditions better is something I'm absolutely in support of.
Absolutely, Lynn. I think you're right on the, you know, you're, you're, you're right on it with that. Um, I'll add a few things to that. I think working conditions, as you said, are very important. And there's a lot of things we can do to improve working conditions. One of the things we did this year with the bond proposal was we actually invested a lot more money into renovations of schools to address things like HVAC and plumbing issues where just historically over past decades, our investment hasn't kept up with our growth. And, you know, people want to come in and they want to work in a nice workplace. It sounds really simple, but it really can make a big difference improving those workspaces. Another thing I'd like to see us explore though, you know, we do have limitations on the benefits we offer. But being a teacher, particularly being a teacher right now, coming out of the pandemic, it is a stressful, stressful situation and things that we can do from the district to perhaps provide more mental health services as a benefit to our teachers and our staff. I think would be something really exciting. You know, right now we, we have more people out there privately trying to obtain mental health services and it's, it's really difficult, especially if you don't have the insurance that allows you to do that. Um, but through, you know, services we could offer through our schools, through our professional development and others, I, I think it's an important, i- it's an important um, benefit we need to explore and need to offer to make sure our teachers are supported, you know, mentally and, and emotionally as well as, as financially.
So as a, would be a new board member, my tact is really, is gonna be different. Um, because there's so much expertise from Chris and Lindsay and Monika and others. For me, what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna listen to them. And listening is extremely powerful, listening to what they need from us. Showing that when you listen, you show that you care. And for me, that's gonna be my approach to listening to staff, listening to teachers. Um, I'm also gonna be very vocal in supporting them. Uh, when people are negative about our educators, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be vocal in responding to it because they need as a former coach, positivity is needed all the time, constantly, especially when you have people on the other side is very negative towards our staff and that's just my approach to how I'm gonna be, uh, on the board. I'm gonna be vocal in supporting them and I'm gonna listen to them.
Right. So that, that time went really, really fast. Uh, so we're gonna move on. Uh, we'll have one more forum question. And then after that, we will move into our breakout rooms. And there are a couple of other questions prepared to get it started in there. So I'm going to shout out to Mary and Kate who both have these questions. Uh, the last two questions, uh, we will all, whoever's mo- moderating in these rooms start out with at least one of these questions, uh, when we get in there with our stakeholders. So before we go forth, uh, Kate Bixler, do we have a couple of people you need to announce?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. Um, I would like to announce that we have, uh, Dajma Livingston with us. A candidate for District Six this evening, Democrat. And we also have, uh, House District Thirty Three Representative, Rosa Gill.
Fantastic. Thank you all for being here.
And former school board member.
Former school board.
Yes, yes. All right. Uh, the next question will be presented by our third Vice Chair, Kate Bixler. We're gonna take about four minutes tops for it. So y'all dig in. Um, Ms. Bixler, the floor is yours.
So not every voter and passionate voter, um, in Wake County has a direct connection to Wake Public Schools. Um, not everyone has a child in school or a family member involved with the school system. So, um, uh, please talk with us a little bit about why these voters should be concerned about the school board this election and why when they make their voting plan, uh, they should prioritize beginning at the back of the ballot. And vote for their representative.
So I think this goes hand in hand with the bond. Education is important. Schools are important. And when you invest in education, if you're talking to someone who, you know, has to ask that question, you can let them know that it increases the opportunities that they have. It brings more income into our, into our community. Um, one of the things that our commissioners here, when they talk to Apple or Fujifilm or another large company that think, that's thinking of moving here, it, um, is how are your schools? Not just state, not just Shaw, not just all of the other great institutions that are here, but how are your schools? Not just for their employees, children, but for the future of their employees. So if you're a business owner, you need people who are going to have the soft skills that we, that we have with our, um, four Cs that we call them. So, um, we are raising students to not just be excellent academically, but to be good citizens once they cross that stage.
So I'd like to, I'd like to piggyback on that. And again, I'm gonna, I, I like to stay positive, but I do have to, I do have to throw out this one potential warning. If you look at some of the statements by some of the candidates, the Wake County Democratic Party has not endorsed and follow some of their social media, you can see where, you know, they're advocating some ideas and some policies endorsing legislation that could be dangerous for everybody in Wake County, not just our students and our schools. You remember what happened when a group in the legislature passed House Bill Two, right? The infamous bathroom bill. You saw the boycotts and you saw people in our area lose jobs. I mean, it was, it was real economic depression. And yet we have candidates that are out there advocating North Carolina's version of Florida's Don't Say Gay Bill and other extreme measures. You know, if you go to a Chamber of Commerce meeting today, you'll see that the employers in Raleigh and Cary and Mooresville and our other towns are concerned, or, you know, are, are concerned about things like diversity and inclusion, right? This is the mindset of the people that are coming to our county and, and want to invest in our county. So, you know, we as school board members have to represent that. Um, so let's, let's just, let's just be clear that, you know, education is our top priority. But at the same time, as elected officials, we have to, uh, we have to represent our community values and, and we can't let people use our school boards as, 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 I don't know, platforms for other political issues down, you know.
There, there's a reason.
That can be just damn.
There's a reason the business community is coming out strong for the bonds. They understand how important the Wake County Public School Bond is and the Wake Tech Bond, which is we, we want, we want both bonds to pass. Um, I always talk about it at at every forum, every opportunity, we have students that really take advantage of Wake Tech, but the business community is very on board with it. I apologize. I have multiple dogs with me. Um, and they're actually not even, not really heavily invested in the Parks Bond. So that can tell you where their priorities are as far, this is what I was told about the business community, but, uh,
Well, I will tell you that the business community is investing a lot of money through our Chamber of Commerce and promoting all three bonds. And that, so I would disagree with you respectfully.
That's fine.
I think Doug said this earlier, though, when, when, when Doug said this earlier, but you know, we have to look strategically. We have to look at five, ten years down the road. Because, uh, you know, personally, I think we all have skin in this game because our doctors, you know, our leaders, our future, you know, our, our future educators, uh, and that's who we're training today because we're billing tomorrow. So and, and when I talk with someone who says, well, why do I care about what, you know, such and such a high school is doing today? And I'm thinking like, well, we gotta think a little bit further down the road. Uh, and that's part of the things that I think we all do. We're, we're looking at decisions because we, we just talked about twenty ten and twenty thirteen, uh, when that takeover took place and we're still living through some of that. Uh, so I, so that's what I, I talk about, uh, great schools, great, but I also talk about we have to, uh, you know, we have to look down the road and that's what we're trying to invest in today.
Well, thank you so much. No, don't say sorry. This is great. All right. We've come to the portion, it goes really fast. We've come to the portion where we are getting ready to go into our breakout rooms. I'm gonna do a little bit of housekeeping and then our ED Frank is going to talk to everybody. We have three breakout rooms, A, B and C. And no, it's not based on grades. Um, our moderators for breakout room A will be, uh, Kate Bixler and Lisa Mead. Our moderators for breakout B will be Mary Thompson and Brandy Brown. Our moderators for breakout C will be Ryan Mathis and myself and hopefully Jackie Jones, if she's in with us this evening. This is where the candidates will go. Breakout A will include District One, Mr. Clap Saddle, District Three, Mr. Hammack, and District Seven, Mr. Hagerty. Breakout B will include District Two, Ms. Johnson Hostler, District Five, Ms. Edmonds, and District Eight, Ms. Mahaffey. And then breakout C will include District Six, Mr. Hershey, and District Nine, Mr. Swanson. So let me, uh, turn this over really quickly to, uh, Mr. Frank. Tell us what we should expect.
All right, everyone. Uh, thanks so much for joining us this evening. Really, uh, you can expect to have a message on your screen that you will be, uh, moving to a breakout room. There's no action needed on your part. So just sit back and enjoy the ride to the breakout room. Uh, see, see you there.